Jane and John.
Your red.
You're on. This is the part you speak.
She got me a minute early. Good evening. Welcome to the Children Budget Committee. We are meeting on January 28, 2015, for the purpose of discussing operating budget changes and having a public hearing. Do you have members of the public tonight? Thank you for coming. Okay. At this point in time, I would ask the board to look at the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes? January 21st?
Motion has been made to accept the minutes as written for the January 21st, 2015 meeting, seconded by Eric. Further discussion, additions, subtractions? Hearing on all those in favor accepting the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Meeting minutes are adopted. Okay. Two housekeeping components of the meeting tonight. Did everyone receive the two memos from Tim?
Yes.
My email. One of them was around the $999 of the merit raise that he has told us was taken out of the wrong fund or to other part of the ledger. The second was, you got a memo from Tim with the latest operating budget?
Yep. Yes.
Do we have any discussion or questions for that?
Is that what's?
That's what this is right here. Okay, here are no questions or discussions. Let us move on. John or Catherine, I also received a message from Pat that the selectmen would like to change part of the budget that they submitted concerning the training period for the new assistant to the Board of Selectmen. Would either one of you be able to address that?
The let's see, is that in the new? Basically, what they did is added some more time for overlap due to the hiring of a new administrative assistant and to allow Catherine to stay on for up to four weeks for the training of that. And that allows for, it's not necessarily mean we're going to use all four weeks, but that is available. I believe that was $5,000.
If you look on the page of the administrative of the selectmen's, yeah, of the budget under administration. If I slide down, you'll see what the question probably to 448.
I think that's reflected in the the one we gave out.
Yes, so it's $4,000.
The one that Tim.
$4,100 more to what we approved last week. If my math is right.
From 50,000. And they increased on the bottom of the page, the FICA Medicare, Life Disability, Retirement, Health Insurance and Dental Insurance to reflect the extra time.
Now, this was a change to the budget after last, last week.
This is a change to the selectmen's recommendation, what they approved. So Catherine was saying it would be line 130 on page two and the corresponding lines to reflect the insurance and other wage type. Thanks, but that's only if needed. Well, we spend that much. We have to budget for it, but that's for the overlap of the time for training.
Okay. At this point in time, does the Budget Committee wish to revisit that line item?
They do not.
Okay, if we look right here, you can see, here goes straight across selectmen's assistant. The $54,000.
He said 130.
Yeah, oh, yes, there is. 60-130. They changed the selectmen approved amount from 5148 to 54248.
All right, I guess.
Uh, 4,000. Forty, yeah. And likewise, the lines such as the FICA to cover for her wages. The related wage garnishments that we have to pay. Have been gone up this below.
Do we wish to revisit or leave as, as written?
I personally leave it the way that we have it.
Eric?
I would have imagined that was calculated in.
I thought when we reviewed the budget, they had already budgeted for the fact that she would be cross-training for a month.
My understanding from Pat was the money was not put in the budget at that point in time. Joyce, is that, is that correct?
The budget was based on one quarter at the current selectmen's administrative assistant and three quarters for the, the replacement.
I thought they mentioned that a couple of weeks ago that they were, or two weeks ago, that they were going to, that they had budgeted for the fact that she would have to cross-train. So that they were hoping to have someone hired by March 1st, and then she would spend March 1st training, and that was included in the budget.
No, it just, they just made that vote last Thursday on the 20, on the 19th. They may have talked about it, but they didn't vote to actually do it until the 19th.
I personally, I think that would have been factored into it, and one line item I have is administrative part-time overtime. Two lines above that also has, you know, 2,500 extra dollars in it. And my concern is, you know, one of the thoughts on that position was at a significantly lower, significantly lower salary than the current person. Obviously, the current person's been, you know, at the job for a long time. But, um, just a concern with the wages on that to begin with, is this really that the factors, it wasn't factored in training? Or the possibility of just adding $4,000 to that salary to begin with? And I think at this point, that should have been factored in. I think we even discussed that with the the Rhodes, you know, Dennis thing on for training purposes also. Is that going to be adjusted also?
No, Dennis, the difference is that with Dennis, we had an employee that was already on board, Arthur, who was taking Dennis's place. So he's been in training actually now for a couple of months, and he's also worked besides Dennis and in the town for many years. So that, that wasn't factored in. We actually, the deadline kind of came short. We're hoping to get somebody in place as the assistant administrator. We were hoping to get them in a lot sooner, but we didn't. There's a lot of things that are going on that we thought it would be helpful to have Catherine to shadow alongside to, and guide her through because at this point, we're going into the town meeting things. We thought it was important to have her learn all of the steps to process everything for the town meetings at the same time. And that's where they added in.
So you've hired someone?
No, there were interviews today. There were interviews yesterday. And they had solid interviews. We have thirty or so.
I'm just listening. So this 50,000 reflects the new salary for the new person that will be hired?
The 50,000 is the amount. We figured that would be the high end that we would hire somebody at if necessary. We had to budget for the highest amount.
Oh, okay.
That we plan on paying somebody. If we'll pay them at whatever we can negotiate at, at a reasonable rate based on their skills. The additional, as you can see, it's what, 39? I don't know. That's just for a month of.
Yeah, overlap.
Overlap. The old, the retiring administrative assistant salary.
Does anyone would like to make a motion to that, or do we want to move on?
Excuse me. If I could just clarify something that Stan said on the administrative overtime line item. That's any hourly employee that works in the town hall. That's where that would be taken out of. So if it's the town clerk, the deputy town clerk, tax collector, the land use coordinator, the new selectmen's assistant. That's what that line item is for.
I, I just have another question for John as the representative of the selectmen's. It was factored in that Catherine would be here for a quarter of the year. So that would be through March. Correct? How much longer are we looking to add that much? Through April?
No, she would, no, she's scheduled, she's budgeted for 13 weeks. We took the part-time person that we'd originally budgeted for 1,560 hours to finish out the rest of the year. All we did was add 200 more hours at $20, $20.44.
So there is somebody at 15. I don't, I don't understand that.
So what we budgeted for the administrative assistant, which is salaried for 13 weeks, comes to $18,261. And we budgeted the new hire, which is going to be hourly times 1,760 hours, is $35,974. If you add those two numbers together, you should get Round it up a little.
So we are looking at starting someone at $20 an hour for this position? That's what the numbers were factoring in?
That was the number that the selectmen used for budgetary purposes.
Personally, I think that's plenty.
You think what?
I think that's plenty, what you already budgeted in.
Now, since this is, this portion is also public, if someone from the public would like to make a statement or a discussion, that is fine. I see the look on your face, that you'd like to say something.
Just say no.
Okay.
That was my motto. It is still my motto. You do not have to make this change here tonight. It can come in front of the legislative body if they so choose. If they really want to push it. It is not something that the Budget Committee tonight has to change. You're sitting there waiting for them to make a motion to change it for the selectmen. Let the selectmen, if they really want this change, bring it to town meeting. Let's get off the public hearing.
We're getting on with the public hearing in a minute. The reason we discussed this is because I wanted each one of the budget members to have an opportunity to put their input into what they thought. Since this is their committee to represent the state, represent their citizen body. At this point in time, we have not heard a motion. We are going to move on in a second so that we can get to the public section of the public meeting. But at the same time, it is now on record as this, this was discussed, and there was no motion present to change the budget. So we're going to discuss in public meeting the operating budget that we have created at that point in time. We're getting there. I'm just a little slower than you are. Motion?
I can make a motion to keep it at our original Budget Committee-approved number.
I would just clarify this. The same thing would happen if you did not make a motion at this point.
It would be nothing. Okay.
Same thing would happen. You do not have to make a motion. Person from the audience is correct, but you do have that opportunity. Hearing no, John?
There was just one other budget item, a question before we go into the public hearing. People asked last week about the comp. Excuse me, I'm quite. The compensated absence line?
Yep.
There was a question about that. Actually, I'm losing my voice, but I got the response.
That's the PD?
Sure.
Yeah. Question?
Don't touch this.
Question was on a budgeted item on compensated absences.
People ask.
And what they were.
I don't want to touch it. He sent something to the budget. He should have sent it.
Okay, I'll get it.
Compensated absences. Okay, so John's bringing it up.
This will explain. This was the definition of the question last week. He asked what the compensated absences were, and there was no number in the line for the police department. I think Stan asked that.
Compensated absences line is a budgeted line where accrued but unused comp time at the end of the year is paid out per the union agreement. See attached. Each union member can accrue up to 40 hours of comp time during the year, and if they're unable to use it due to work schedules, then the town has to buy it out at the year's end. The chief has done a good job making sure those seeking comp time are eligible for it, and he has had Captain Martin managing the program to minimize year-end exposure. Last year, they cut off allowing comp time accruals in October, and they encouraged the officers and corporals to use the time prior to the end of the year. This last year, there was no time bought out. We expended nothing from this line. The challenge then remains in how to appropriately budget this line. There are 15 officers who are eligible for comp time, and with up to 40 hours each of comp time, each worst case, we could be liable to pay up to 600 hours of time plus taxes and retirement exclamation point. The average salary of these 15 officers is 56,579 or $27.20 per hour. When you add taxes and retirement, that hourly rate jumps to 35.74, which is roughly $21,444. Dollars, the maximum in comp time that could be paid out. I'm really not sure what a good number is for that, this line. If nothing else, at least $1 should be left in it. I'm copying the board and the chief in the interest of time.
John, could you make a printed copy and give that to Juliana later on?
And the line item we're discussing is page 10. Two, three, four, five down, 20-265. So now, what you just read, it seems to me like this year we paid out nothing.
Yes.
But the zero isn't actually in the expenses for that line item. See what I mean?
Page 10.
It's the one I printed out. It says, page 10, five down, compensated absences. And that's the question is, they haven't been paid out so far, or there were none given?
There were none given.
So that item should say zero in it. Next to 2901 for 2014.
I just sent Tim a text to see if he could give us an answer on that.
We can continue this, the discussion during the public session?
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we budgeted the possibility of it. Every year they've gone under what was there, so it's one of those fluid things you can't really predict.
Does the committee wish to address that now, or wait for the text from the, from the chief?
Tim, Tim said we expended nothing from this line last year. Last year, there was no time bought out, and we expended nothing from this line.
I think it's just a
How much is?
Not a typo, but the zero just needs to be there.
Right, and that's not, the zero is fine.
Yeah.
Zero is fine. Okay, are we set to go into public session?
You guys all happy with that? You want to change the number on that, 5,000 or?
Yeah, we could change it. Down, right?
Yeah, it's been 4,000, 3,000. This year was zero. I think this year also, they had full staffing. That might be why, you know, it was lowered. What would you think?
2012, there was a lot, I believe, it was because there was a lot of people that still had accrued time under the old plan. It was carried over.
I mean, even then, it was.
I don't know why it was budgeted so high in 2012. I can't think.
What, what do you suggest for a number?
Stan, would you like to make a motion to that?
I don't know. I mean, we could lower the number to make it look better on the budget. And if they get it, it's gonna.
We can always revisit next year though.
Sure.
I would, I wouldn't, I would say, I would make a motion that we reduce that line item for $5,000 down to $1,000.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. What line item was that, John? On Stan, excuse me.
That would be 265. 20-265. The full line item is 01-78-4210.20-265.
That went from 5,000 down to 1,000?
Correct.
What is, Garrett, what is the effect on the total of this year's budget?
The department or the whole budget?
The whole budget.
One thing on that. They're also included in that there's taxes and retirement on that amount, so it would be best to have Tim recalculate the other affected lines by that change. And then at the next meeting, we could change those numbers. So maybe if we made a generic motion to say to lower the associated lines to reflect the change from 5,000 to 1,000. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Sounds good. Nope, he seconded it.
Okay. All those in favor, yeah?
And the only, to explain to the public and the people watching that John believes that there are ramifications in other numbers in other areas, and Tim will just have to update us at that point.
Retirement, FICA.
Now, will that, my question is, will that now affect the fact that we have a public hearing tonight?
No.
We're not, we're not there yet.
Okay.
We are going to get there in about two minutes, hopefully.
We could actually make changes after the public hearing.
Absolutely. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nay, any other business before we go into public session?
I believe was the last of the questions that were asked of me. Is that correct? I think that was it. Yeah, that's.
Roll up. All right. At this point in time, are we ready to go into public session? Let us go into public session then. For those folks that are going to be speaking from the public, if you could give us your name and your first or initially start for the people that are watching in from the outside or watching this with popcorn and hot chocolate later on. Do we have any comments? Issues or discussion items from the public? Yeah, go.
Come up to the mic too.
Come on up. Come on up. All right.
Some of you know me. How does it go? My name is Tony Villair. I used to sit in Wayne's chair. And I looked through this budget today, and I see a lot of changes to a lot of lines that affect salaries, which affect benefits, would affect all the associated costs that go with it. I am most appalled, most appalled by the fact that the deputy town clerk tax collector line went up by 29%. That was a huge, huge, I've never seen anybody get a 30% increase in their wage. That wage is now driving, I'm almost 100% sure that wage is driving the now 16% increase in the tax collector's position. That is too much money. We cannot, as a town, sustain this consistent, huge levels of increases. It goes up just the first time, 30%, and three, and three, and three. And before you know it, we have priced ourselves right out of our tax base. We have the selectmen themselves getting a 14, 14% raise? Giving themselves that. They went up $3,000 last year, 3,000. Doesn't sound like much, but when you're giving that big of an increase year after year, we, as a constituency, cannot afford this. It doesn't just travel from that line. It travels into the FICA, the Medi, the disability, all the other taxes that go with it. Why are we having these large increases? You're the Budget Committee. You're setting this budget. Why are we having these large increases?
A point of clarification before we go into that. Wasn't the selectmen's salary upgraded at the town meeting by the governing body?
The governing body is the selectmen.
No, the government, excuse me, the legislative body. Was it not the legislative body that changed the original budget from last year and added through amendment to 3,000? changed the original budget from last year and added through amendment to $3,000?
To them? Then let them do it again this year. They don't need to do it two years in a row.
I think I see what she's talking about.
I don't think the, what the selectmen...
I don't know what you're talking about.
Last year on the floor...
Legislative body.
...increased it from 18,000 to 2,013 to 21,000. Now, this year, it's going up from 21 to 24.
So in two years, you're looking at a 28, 28, over a 28.5% increase in the selectmen's line, in two years, while the people in the common, and I'm Scott Davis, while the taxpayer out there is not looking at that kind of an increase.
Scott, could you just tell, for the audience?
Scott Davis.
There you go.
I just, I agree with Tony. I think it's ridiculous. I really do. If the legislative body wants to raise it, they should, but for the selectmen to bring there an increase to the floor, I don't think it's right, especially where they got a 15 or 14.5% increase last year. They went from 18 to 21, so it was a bigger increase than the 14% last year because the number was smaller. So you're looking at about a 14.5% increase last year. I think people out there are having a hard time paying the taxes, and when you see the increase, when we look at a selectman's assistant, and you look at last year's expenditure in that line, 84,000 and some change for a selectman's assistant, that position in the state of New Hampshire, if you're a state employee, which is comparative, is either a 17 or a 19 pay scale, and that would top out around 48,000, 49,000 when they've been there as long as this individual's been with the town. I just, this is crazy, this whole thing, and to look at $50,000 in that line starting out again, and that's, that line was over expended, and I'd asked the budget committee, what did you get for an explanation, that line being over expended by 12,683 last year? What explanation did you get? And then you're looking the same thing, you got compensated absences, the line was 50, budgeted in 2014, 5478. This year, $9,000. Are we kidding ourselves? Did you do your, did you actually crunch these numbers? Because the increases, that's over 100% increase in one year. In that line, it was 4,088 expended on that line, and looking at 9,000 this year. This is dreamland.
Going back to Tony's original question, John, before we get there, Catherine was giving some information, then I'll go to you, John.
I could probably answer a lot of those and defer to Catherine.
Well, Wayne was right. The selectmen did not vote in a town meeting their raise. It came from a resident at a town meeting. The selectmen didn't put it in the budget. It came straight from the floor. This is, this selectman had no idea it was going to be suggested, so it did not come from the board of selectmen. And the board of selectmen didn't increase their rate this year.
Department's request, it says 24,000. Selectmen's...
Well, I think it, that'll, I think that has to do with the fact that when it came to the floor, it was unclear whether the raise was going to be retroactive to January 1st, or start in March, because that wasn't discussed. The selectmen said, "We'll start the raise on July 1st, just like the rest of the town employees." So the reason you're saying the increase for 2015, I believe, to clarify, is that's the rest, that's the first part of the year, well, we didn't give ourselves an increase that was given in the legislative body for last year.
So now you've given yourself twice.
No.
So it's a 30% raise, is what you're saying, was given last year?
No, no. On the second Saturday in March, someone from the floor wanted to raise the salaries stipend, I mean, the selectmen's stipend.
No, they made a motion to address the, to increase a line item. That's one, it's a line item budget. They increased it to 21,000 on the floor, that does increase it to 24,000.
No, they did not increase it by the total, they increased it by...
Four, up to $400.
Right, the monthly stipend each selectman gets. That's why it was unclear. Was it supposed to start January 1st? Was it supposed to start March? Was it supposed to start in July? The selectmen themselves said, "We'll have it start in July."
It makes no sense, though, because you're saying $400 per selectman, five selectmen, that's $2,000, Joyce. It's not 3,000. And now it's 6,000. If we go from 18 to 24, we've gone $6,000 in this raise. How is that, if it was a motion made to increase the selectmen's stipend?
No, it's 4,800. No, no, each individual selectman. Each individual selectman went from $300 a year, a month, to $400 a month. So you went from 3,600 a year to 4,800 a year.
Okay, before we go on, John, you wanted to add?
This is Tim texting.
I don't know if you checked those numbers, the $400 a month, by the five selectmen's times the 12 months, see if that comes off? That should be that amount, and that would be the number that was...
You're getting, each selectman gets $400 a month?
$400.
So 4,800 per selectman?
Per selectman.
To 20,000, to 24,000, yes? 800 times the five is 24,000.
Yeah, and that's, that would reflect the number for the, well, that was brought up on the floor. So, so it didn't, and the selectmen did not include any additional money for this year, or any raises this year. That number should match what was reflected on the floor.
That's a motion from the floor to go from 3 to 400, so it was a motion to go up 25, over 25% in one year.
And it was accepted by the legislative body.
Yeah, it was, and it was...
Who made the motion? Do you have the minutes?
Jane Alden.
I don't remember that, Ann Alden.
Jane Alden?
Jane Alden, yeah. I have a question. The next question that you had...
Okay, hang on for a second.
Sure.
The next question you had was, um, let's see, um, there was some other questions, let's see, the compensated absence?
Yes.
Could we go one at a time? Because I think we're talking about like five different, I just wanted to stay on the selectmen. I have a question about the selectmen's, so that we can knock this all off one at a time.
Go ahead.
My question to you, John, as a selectman, or someone who's been watching this, have you, this year, last year, or ever, and can the selectmen in any way vote themselves a raise?
They have not voted themselves a raise. I'm not sure if they have the authority to do so. They do. I'm getting a nod from Catherine.
That's why it was implied that the selectmen gave themselves an extra, and if there is a concern from the public that the math is not correct, I think we've gotten that, that this actually came from last year's town meeting, and it was voted on by the town and agreed upon.
Yeah.
Can I ask, was that made at the end of the meeting, that motion? When most of the town people would have said, "Oh, everything's all done here, nothing important's going on, let's go home."
It was made prior to the motion to adjourn, probably about 10 minutes. The legislative body was still in session.
Can I read the minutes?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
We have the minutes for you.
Um, I don't know what page, page 8, I think. Says Jane Alden moved to amend Article 15, to see if the town will vote to increase line item number 4130-10-130, the selectman's salary by $3,000 from 18,000 to 21,000. She explained this would be an extra $100 per month. Current rate, the selectmen get 3,000, and this would increase to 400, wait, let me read that again. Current rate, the selectmen get $300, and this would increase it to $400 per month. She noted this is a working group of selectmen, gas costs have gone up as well as car maintenance, and she does not feel the town has given them their just due. The last time they received the raise was in 2008. The amendment was seconded by Jerry Davis. Moderator Chuck Mitchell read the amendment to the assembly, to see if the town will vote to increase line item 4130-10130, the selectman's salary by $3,000 from 18,000 to 21,000.
How many pieces of business were carried on after that?
Um, well, and then, then there's a, says Mr. Ralph Sellers stated he had some deals with the board of select and fence viewing committee, that he could vouch they put in more time, wow, this is, I can't read this, that he could vouch they put in more time most would ever know of. He was in favor of the amendment. Town Clerk Sidney Reinhardt agreed and stated that most did not know that they worked around the clock outside of business hours. This had stated she was in support. Seeing that there were no further questions, a moderator took the vote on the amendment submitted by Jane Alden. Amendment passed. And then moderator Mitchell read Article 15 as amended, to see if the town will vote to raise or appropriate the budget committee's recommended sum of $5,339,740 for general municipal operations as posted, as part of the warrant in MS 74, and the vote was taken and passed. And then there was, it was last article, then, um, after that, there was something about Ernie's Garage, and then there was open for other business. It was near the end of the meeting. I don't know the time, but it, it was nine pages of minutes, and it was on page 8.
Okay, John?
But that, just reading that, it does bring up a point, though. It sounds like she was trying to bring up that salary by $100 per month, but the way it's written, it was only approved for $3,000 a year, to 21,000, and it's been up to 24,000, which would, so I think there's, I think that there is an issue here, that what was tried to be done, and what was actually done are two different things.
So it could be a...
It was, it was, where the intent was that they wanted to increase their thing, but it looks like it was increased only for half a year.
That's correct. That's what Catherine Dawson said.
Right, but, but...
They didn't take the increase...
But no, the motion on the floor was to increase it from $18,000 a year to $21,000 a year.
For that year's budget.
For that year's budget, but that's from January 1st to December 31st, so it's for a full year, $3,000.
No, it was for, it was for six months.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that, yeah.
You can split it up that way.
So you, so what should have, so as, Eric, as you read it, you think it should have...
It should have been, they should have taken the full amount for the full year.
Well, I think the math is wrong in her amendment. She did it based on half of year, but gave...
Yeah, she said she wanted to increase the budget to 21,000, she wanted to add 3,000.
Did you read the motion?
Stan, hold on for a second.
I'm sorry.
Before I get to that, Stan, go ahead.
My question to you, Eric, is, as you read that, it seemed like the math was two different ways. It was increased from 3,000 to 4,000, that came to 21,000 total. And by doing that, if it was voted yea by the town, they should have been retropaid from January. Right?
Eric, before we go, Catherine?
All raises in the town item are July 1st. Union employees, July 1st, six months.
We always budget for six months.
Six months.
In your budget, we're a line item budget. That's why we're budget law. You raised the budget raised through taxation, how much? $3,000, or did you raise it six? That's my question. Because whatever that motion was made, how much money was put in the budget is all that you can spend in that line. Now, if it's going from 21 to 24 this year, that's an increase.
Yeah, but that's all they spent in that, in that year.
And all they had was what they had in the line, Joyce. I don't care if you talk about only six-month raises, you can only spend in that line unless the selectmen move money around, which they can't, it's a line item budget. But when you get approval from DRA, the money that was adjusted, how much money was put in from that article to the final number, the $5 million, whatever it was raised at town meeting? That's my point. And if there was only $3,000, that's all that was put in that line.
Okay, hold on for a minute, Scott. Eric?
How do I say this? It says, "The increase the salaries by $3,000."
The salary line item.
From 18,000 to 21,000. It doesn't say, and it says, it really should have been $6,000, I think, in her motion.
But she didn't want to pay for the full year, she wanted...
But it doesn't say that, the lot...
Yeah, you can't...
I've read the whole motion.
Hang on, let each one speak.
It says Jane, I'll repeat it. It says Jane Alden moved to amend Article 15, to see if the town will vote to increase line item, I'm not going to read the number, the selectman's salaries, by $3,000 from 18,000 to 21,000. She explained this would be an extra $100 per month. Current rate, the selectmen get $300, and this would increase it to $400 per month. She noticed this was, this was a working group of selectmen, gas costs have gone up as well as car maintenance, and she does not, and she does not feel the town has given them their just due. The last time they received a raise is 2008. The amendment was seconded by Jerry Davis. Moderator Chuck Mitchell read the amendment to the assembly, to see if the town will vote to increase line item, the selectman's salaries by $3,000 from 18,000 to 21,000.
Okay. John?
Well, I, I think, Scott does have a point, because what the moderator read back and was voted on, was to raise it by $3,000 for that year, which, and it did not say for the next year, or anything, it would be for 3,000, which would bring that up to the 21 for this year. So there's an additional, you're saying there's an additional $3,000?
I think I know where the confusion is.
In the budget.
I think I know where the confusion is.
What the moderator said is what was voted on.
Oh, okay.
Right.
The line item is what was voted on. The amount in the line item was voted on, not the $100 or any...
No, I, that's...
That was an explanation, but, and however she explained it, I don't know, I wasn't there. But what bothers me is that $3,000 was increased in the line item. It's in the bottom line, the budget went up $3,000 because of that motion, not a six.
Okay, Scott, Joyce, do you have anything to add?
The, the intent was to increase the selectmen's stipend from $300 to $400 a month, but only for half a year. So to do that, to budget that money for half a year, they budgeted for half of a year. So now, in the next year, you budget for the full year. It's no different than with employee wages, that you always see that in the next year, what's been expended is, is more. And the same with the PD, when they, because they get their wages in July.
There isn't one of the selectmen that does the job for the monthly stipend. That's not why we're selected. This was voted on at town meeting, it went to DRA afterwards, it was all approved. My suggestion is the same as was made earlier. If there's a problem with this, bring it up to the legislative body, who voted on it last year, and let's move on with the public hearing and discuss the budget.
Stan?
We'll move on when we're ready to, and then we just want to get to the bottom of each item that the public has issues with, and I think the confusion comes that it was $3,000, $3,000 for the budget year 2014. And her explanation for that was an increase to, of $100 per month. So the town, the selectmen, did that math as to next year, they would do that raise again. That's the question, is how was it actually worded to the point where we may have to put them back at 18,000 for next year, if it wasn't worded correctly? You get what I'm saying? Because Jane may have just worded it so that the raise was for la, the remainder of last year, the line item for 2014. Is there any mention of keeping it for 20, it's assumed you keep it, but that's where the wording comes in, and we need, we'd almost need somebody to...
Jules, I'll be right with you. Catherine?
It's not up to the budget committee to decide whether a warrant article was interpreted correctly, written correctly, or misinterpreted. If the budget committee wishes to reduce a line item, they simply should vote to do so.
Well, no, we shouldn't, because that's something, no, please let me answer, please let me answer.
Okay.
In that, this is a warrant article that we really don't have control over, and we could put this down to $1, it's irrelevant because it's by the legislative body. So we need to know what the correct interpretation of that vote was.
Jules?
Yeah, I agree. Despite the intent of what may have been intended by this or that, or, I don't want to read into that, I just want to follow what...
to read into that, I just want to follow what the bottom line was, and it seems to be that the bottom line was just to go to $18,000.
Tony, I'll be right with you. John?
Not to go over this too many times here, but yes, the amount would have been... Let's see if we calculated that out. Would have been... Where are we at, the $21,000? Would have been at $21,000 for this year if you were going to keep it at the six-month rate. The selectmen, looking at the spirit of the motion that was put behind and what they felt the intent was and our understanding of it, figured it was for the whole year and budgeted for the $24,000, which would pay the selectmen at $400 a month, and you're correct. The calculation that would technically say more this year than last year. So yes, it's an increase in it, because now the selectmen are asking to be paid... A budget to be paid more than just the... Not to be paid six months at one rate and six months at another rate. That's not what's in the budget this year. This year is to have the same rate of $400 for the whole thing. And probably at this point, it could be brought up at the town meeting, and the budget committee, if they wish, could change this number due to the public hearing back down to the $3,000, not the six. And if the selectmen want to revisit that, they could change theirs, but with that...
It's understanding why there's confusion.
Right, Eric.
I understand why everybody did what they did.
Tony?
Excuse me. The intent behind the motion was to give the selectmen a $100 a month increase in their salary. With that logic, the select board presented to you a budget that paid them for the year 2015 at that rate. You, as a budget committee, have approved that amount, which translates to a 14% line item increase, and there was a 14% increase the year before, total of 25%. Once again, I reiterate that as a town, this is the smallest of those lines that has a major impact. With the continuation of having these types of increases to our line items, we cannot sustain this. You have got to be prepared at town meeting to go in there and be able to explain to the constituency that this line has increased, this is why it increased, and you have okayed it.
I will answer that question. Whatever the final product is of this budget committee, I not only will defend it, I will explain it, and I will stand behind that budget, good, bad, or indifferent. Scott?
Wayne, the point that I'm trying to make here is that the body, the legislative body, raised that line by $3,000. If they... If or would have they raised that line by $6,000? I don't know. But that's what's happened. And were they misled as far as being that it was a $3,000, and they just... I wasn't there, like I said, so I don't know the $3,000, it went up $3,000. They might have thought they were given a $3,000 increase, right, raised or whatever. Do they listen to? Because all they're voting on is the $3,000 increase. They're not voting on that, "Listen, this is only half of it. You're actually voting $6,000?" I never heard that in any of the explanation.
As a matter of fact...
Okay, hold on.
As a matter of fact, you just mentioned, before we could answer, and Scott asked his question, that you believe the intent of it was to give a raise of $100 per month, and the legislative body made that decision, and I understand why they chose to write the numbers that it did. So you agreed. But then Scott says, "No, you don't." So the two of you don't even agree with each other. My question is to the other people in the public who have listened to and heard these numbers, what are your thoughts on this? If you haven't?
Sure.
Do you understand why these numbers are where they are?
It's Tim Sadler. I understand the intent. I know Jane. I was at the meeting, and I hear what Scott's saying. If the amendment had been for $6,000, would it have been looked at differently? I don't know the answer to that question. But I fully believe that the intent was to raise the selectmen's salary by $100 a month, and therefore I see where the $24,000 comes from. And I guess I understand that. I, too, am concerned with all the line item salaries that are on the statute. The ones that Tony mentioned, and then there was another one, too, that I want to understand.
I was just asking about this one line. Because we'll have... We have a whole list of them to go through, but does anybody else have any other input on this line itself?
Does the board wish to act upon any of the information that was given tonight at this point in time?
I do not. I think personally, after we hear the public input from everything and the whole budget, then the board should come to a decision.
Free discussion. Okay. If that's the way the budget committee would like to move on, I have no problems with that.
There were some other questions that Scott asked that I do have some...
Scott, go ahead, sir.
I think I have an explanation.
I had a concern with the administrative compensation absences.
Can I start with that?
$9,000. We only spent $4,000. This year, you're asking for $9,000. You're looking at twice as much as what you expended last year. I increased again on that. I know it's not a... It's only $5,000. Well, no, it isn't only $5,000. It is $5,000 more than what you expended last year.
John, was that the item we just cut at the beginning?
No, that would be...
Because there's a separate one from the...
No.
This is compensated absences. One of the things is with Catherine retiring after being here for quite a while. If you remember, there was a buyout quite some time ago where people had been accruing time. I don't know if you're familiar with that. Remember the vacation time, it was allowed to just build up, and we stopped that, and we had to buy them out with Catherine retiring. She had time under the old policy that expired 2009 or '08? 2008, that she was holding on to and to get compensated for. So that was part... That was a good chunk.
Can you explain, John, how the budget, $71,981 in that position, and we expend $84,664, which is $12,683 more, which is 17.6% more than what we budgeted in that line? How does that happen? That's the most expensive employee in town right there in this whole budget.
Yes. One of the things, Catherine is retiring, and I'll go on with it. And that was for last year's, what we spent last year.
What you spent last year. I'm not talking about her retiring. I'm talking about what you expended out of this budget. How did that line, being governed by the select board, how did that line go over 17.6%? That's what I'm asking as a taxpayer, because I have concerns. And as what Tony has brought up and what Tim brought up, that's my concern also. If we keep giving the raises in the other lines, in the deputy town clerk, in the town clerk, and in the land use office that we're looking at in here, we're going to have everybody making this kind of wage, and nobody's going to be able to afford to pay their taxes in this town. It's ridiculous. It's not out in the private sector, I guarantee you, the increases like that. It's just not out there. The poor taxpayer in town, it's not there. I mean, I know what my... Out of my pocket, my taxes went up 11.6%. Dollars out of my pocket, not tax increase, but dollars out of my pocket to pay the tax bill in this town, went up 11.4% this last tax bill.
Now, to be fair to that tax rate, that was including...
That's everything, but it comes out of my pocket.
But I'm still saying, we're also talking the majority coming from the school district, the fire district, okay? So how do that...
And local and state school, but everything, but it's dollars out of my pocket.
Absolutely. So not only should we be addressing the budget for the municipal department, we also should be looking at the budgets, and I would hope that the citizens would, the fire district and the school. The school budget is due to go up 1.44%. This year, 77 cent increase for the adjustment. So I'd hope that these same concerns will be addressed at their public meetings.
And they will be.
Thank you. John, go ahead.
Yes, Scott. And I had the same concerns, as well as the other selectmen discussed a lot of this, and it was hashed over many times, in the hiring of the new person. I'm not avoiding your first question, though. And so therefore, one of your questions to reflect how we were concerned about that, the $50,014, and you had a question about was that the right amount to be hiring somebody new in that?
I know that's not. I know it's only three-quarters. It's a three-quarters rate.
Okay, good. So that was going to be my answer for that one. So that's one of the big concerns was to not have somebody there. The other thing, the reflection of the $84,664 was the one that's got a good thought on your side, mine as well, and a lot of other people. The person receiving that money has been here quite a while and also received a pay increase last year. We had budgeted at one amount, and that... We budgeted into a pool for merit raises, and I think that amount was half a percent higher than if you were to average the raises out across all the employees. I think that covered for some of it. I don't know if anybody else...
Wouldn't merit raises, wouldn't that have to come out of the merit raise pool? What if it was expensed against that, though, if it was a merit raise?
It gets transferred over to the...
They move the budget. They move...
Once they get the raise, it goes into their... Instead of listing each...
I'll reiterate, John, when we get to town meetings, it's going to be a rough town meeting. This is the type of increases, because I'll tell you, when you look at a 17.6% increase for what was budgeted last year, I don't care what you talk about, how long someone's been there, merit raises or whatever, the common person out there is just not going to understand, and they're going to be furious with that. I would hope they'd be furious like I am.
And I would hope that they express those opinions.
I am upset.
And I think, again, as we're recommending, it is up to the legislative body to come up with the final product. And I would certainly hope, and I certainly would probably hope that people would show up at the town meeting, make their opinions known, and vote the budget that they want this town to operate on. And that's where I'm looking. I would like to move on to some other people, then they can come back to further questions at either Tony or... Lost my train of thought. Anyways, Jim, you had a question.
I...
I believe it's Tim, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have the same concern as was expressed about the increase in the salary lines and adding the land use. That's the other one that went up. I have a comment, though. I really enjoy the format that you've done, and I appreciate all the notes that you put in. And I have a question on the revenue side. The miscellaneous income and refunds for the town actually received $275,899. And this is a budget of $88,000. I guess I wonder where that money typically comes from, by the way, range of numbers.
Catherine, John, or Joyce?
I can probably get a floor here. Remember, I am on the budget committee.
There you go.
Which line, the revenue?
The miscellaneous income and refunds to the town. It's the second to the last item. It's 03-000.
One of them, we sold business park that was where revenue came from. So that was a one-time thing. I think you remember, we've had that piece for a while, and we're trying to get rid of. I think there was some revenue, there was another tax property that we sold and got some money back that was owed. So although it went out to other places, we still have to say this is miscellaneous revenue that came in. So there was sale of property that was in the tax lien or the town owned that we've been trying to get rid of.
So the $88,000 and another piece of property that the town hoped to found.
Miscellaneous income and... No, I think that just covers, well, that could... If we did have to sell something due to tax liens or something. I believe that also covers some grants. Catherine, can you help me out with this one? The $88,000 that's based on grants and other... It could be gifts, it could be...
Hey, hang on for a second.
Yeah, that's the ASH credit. We got money from the co-op. And we also received contribution holiday credits from the health insurance trust. So the ASH credit and the contribution holidays, those won't be recurring. We'll get another small one on the health insurance later in February, but those will be non-recurring.
Okay, John, if I could interrupt a second. Tony?
Where's that $88,000 coming from? Where are you expecting to get that income this year? Cat, maybe? Rabbit?
We, as a budget committee, have not gone over the incomes yet.
We still have...
We just got...
Is business park bribe, is that sale, lease, multiple payments, is that all done now, so there'll be no more money coming in from there?
No, that's continuing. We get over $3,000 a month.
Is that part of that $88,000?
I believe that comes out of the sale of town property.
Jim, what are the questions?
No, that was a line item.
Stan?
I have a question for Joyce. If you could just clarify where that salaried position of selectmen's assistant was budgeted at approximately $72,000 and ended up being at $84,000, above $84,000. Do you have any better explanation as to how that got so high?
Well, part of that is the merit increase, because you're looking... That was implemented in July. And then part of that was that retirement payment. I'm pretty sure that was made in 2014.
What's a retirement payment?
That's what John was talking about.
So that would be... That's where the...
In the expense, yeah. And then in the administrative compensated absences, that would be for purchasing paid time off. We have more employees that now are eligible to purchase paid time off. So that's another reason why that has increased for 2015, plus the outgoing selectmen's assistant is eligible to... Because she's still earning paid time off, she's still eligible to purchase paid time off.
Could you just give me a better clarification again of what retirement payout means?
I would have to go...
Why that's not in... It just seems like a confusion where compensated absences and retirement payment...
Yeah, compensated absences is purchasing paid time off, which the employee...
Holidays, sick days, things like that.
Just...
Vacation days.
Well, it's paid time off days, which could be vacation, sick, what have you. So that's in the employee policy. That's been since 2008. Back in 2008, when they changed from the old policy to the new policy, because once an employee has received benefits, you can't take those benefits away. So there were two employees at that time that were given letters saying that when they retire, they are eligible based upon the number of years that they've worked, so many days of retirement pay as a severance. That's the word I'm looking for.
That's a better explanation as to why we went from that number.
Yes, and so that was, you know, a large payment that was made as part of that severance.
Folks are back.
Yes, please.
These folks over here, anything you'd like to ask? You just watch, you haven't...
Well, you know, we're new to the area, so I'm just, I'm not real sure what's going on as far as... I'm just trying to make sense of it all, I guess.
We will do better at that. John?
I will add that we do have various spots on, like the budget committee... I will add that we do have various spots on, like the Budget Committee and the others. So if you enjoy this--
The whiteboard downstairs, you add your name to it, you can have my seat.
Thank you for being honest. Scott, my apologies for blocking on your name as I was going segueing. I can't forget you. But Scott, you have something else you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd like you to explain how you came on the gas, how you came to the number as a Budget Committee on the gas line for the PD. Can you break it down for me and tell me how you came up with that number?
John? He's the liaison with Police Department.
And when did you discuss the PD, how long ago was the PD and that line and these numbers finalized? And that would be to you, Wayne.
Okay. The PD came in with the rest of the division, the department heads. That was approximately, John, was it two weeks ago? Two, three weeks ago? They all came in. The major concern that the PD has is we're still in a contract with the Wintisquam School District in the procurement of all their fuel. And that is now being actively worked upon by the selectmen as whether or not they can get out of the contract. Because at this point in time, they are, is it a 10-year contract, John?
No. The contract will be up, the--
The fuel.
The water district's in the same thing. The contract will be up the end of June, and then there'll be a new contract for 12-month period after, from July to the following, July 1st to the following June 30th, within the gas contract, along with the diesel contract over there. And currently, they're paying, they pay $307 plus 5 cents--
That is correct.
--per gallon, so $312 for the gas contract. And that's gonna be up. But I'm asking you, how was the line, how was the number derived? How did the Budget Committee come up with that number? It's your number, it's not their number. They give you a number, but I wanna know how you broke that number down. I'm looking at this number, and I totally disagree with it. I'm looking at $32,000, the same thing. We've got, we've got gas out there that when they renegotiate this, they're gonna lock it in for a year, just like when they renegotiated with $307. It was much cheaper than what was on the street. So in June, when they renegotiate, they could renegotiate under $2 very easily because they're not paying the taxes. So when they renegotiate that, that's gonna be locked in for a year. Okay? That's gonna be locked in from Jan, July 1st through June 30th for the following year. The $307 only equates, when I break down, and that's why I was asking, and I don't, I can't get a number. You guys don't seem to say there's so many gallons. How many gallons was used in the PD? Do you know, as a Budget Committee?
First off, I'm not the one to make any of the decisions. The Budget Committee itself came up with the committee. So addressing the question just to me would not be appropriate. That, what would be appropriate is to address that question to the committee and how they formulated and they voted upon that number. So I was more than glad, more than glad, put it forward to the committee as to that.
I'd like to know from the committee then, Wayne, how did you come up with that number? $32,000.
John, would you like to start?
I brought the same thing up, seeing that we should be getting a lesser amount. There was discussion with the chief. He insisted that that would be a proper amount, and it was voted on, and that was the number that was approved.
I, as a taxpayer, don't wanna, I wanna give the money to run the town, but I don't wanna give them more money than they need to run the town. This is a perfect line. This is the way I broke it down. You take the $35,259, that's what they expended in gas. You divide that by the $312, which is what they pay for out of that line, between the $307 and the 5 cents for every gallon to go back into the tank fund. I came up with $11,300 gallons of fuel they went through. You divide that in half, because they travel just as much in the summer as they do in the winter, so the months are all the same. Divide that in half, $56.50. So you take $56.50 and you times it by the $312. You're gonna come up with a number. So you come up with that number, it's $17,630. You take the other $56.50 and say you use a figure of $2, because I think it's gonna be under $2. But you're estimating, this is a budget, so you estimate it at $2. You come up with $11,300. You put that together with the number, and you come up with like $28,930. Instead of having it exactly what we had the year before, when we know fuel's going down, there's not being due, and you do justice to the taxpayer.
So as a, as a citizen, you're recommending to the Select Board that they--
No, I'm recommending to the Budget Committee.
At this point, because we're bound by their contract, if they sign a contract with Wintisquam Regional School District in regards to procurement of fuel at their set price, are you recommending to the Select Board that they do not enter into that contract with Wintisquam Regional School District?
I think, I think they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna probably have to enter into it.
Then if we do--
I'm not recommending one thing. What I'm saying, Wayne, I serve as a water commissioner. We're using $2 a gallon for the last half of our budget for this year.
And you're saying, hopefully, and I would hope, that gas prices stay up. What if they spike up? What if we create, what if we create a contract that says we will spend $3 a gallon, or $3.50 a gallon, and we budget it only for $2.50?
When you have gas, Wayne, at this time--
But it's not gonna be this time--
Listen, you're sitting here, I'm trying to explain to you, you're sitting here the end of January, as a Budget Committee. We have gas on the street, which they don't pay all the taxes you pay on the street. We get it cheaper than what we get it on the street when you pay down in Northfield, okay? So what I'm saying is, over here at Cumberland's, right now, you can buy for $1.91. Minus the taxes, probably puts that on the state contract, would probably put that down to about $1.70, $1.70, $1.72. You're probably gonna lose 20 cents anyway. So what I'm saying is, it's not gonna be $3.12 for the last half of the year, for sure. But there was nothing done on this line, and this is what bothers me, this is totally within the budget. There was nothing done on this line that this Budget Committee with that knowledge in your mind two weeks ago. There was nothing done on this line. You just assumed he needs $32,000, and you put $32,000 there. And that's what makes the taxpayer furious, because that gives them more money than they need for that line.
And you're making an assumption that you were not here. So I will take that assumption, and I would, I am really frustrated by the fact that that assumption was made, that we did nothing to take a look at that price. We took a look at the contract, we took a look at our obligations, we took a look at the obligations from the next contract, because that is now out to bid from the school district. That amount has not been set at this point in time. We were given the numbers from the PD, we were given numbers by town people as to their usage and their best estimate on how much they get. We still, at this point in time, do not know what that contract is. That's why I'm saying, why have not people gone to the Select Board and said, let's get out of this contract? We can spend less money by finding an alternate resource, if there's one out there, for a different price. Why are we still within this three-town, very early, three-town conglomerate that the school district has and paying their prices? Their contract does not go away on January 1st. Their contract goes for the full school year. So they're just negotiating their prices at this point in time.
The tank contract goes from Jan, July 1st to June 30th. That's what the tank contract-- We have it in the water district, we're a member of it in the water district, I know what they're negotiating with. So my point is, Wayne, is it should not be what the same amount was last year unless we plan on using a lot more gas.
But I'm saying, until we know what that price is, okay? Because we're still paying, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are we still paying the price from the last contract with the school?
We're still in the same, the contract amount for the fuel from that shared--
Until June and July.
Yeah.
Until June 30th.
Right, but that, we still got this time to go through. That contract has not been renegotiated for any of the fuel. Stan?
This is a poor line item to look at waste for the police department, because, you know, you're discussing how the last few years, gas prices were very high. Well, it was budgeted in 2013 at $32,000. It actually cost $35,400. Last year, it was budgeted at $32,000. Cost the police department $35,200. $3,000 more. So this is a poor example of waste.
But what--
But, please, allow me. And you don't know that prices are gonna stay at $1.91, because you used the example of Cumberland Farms, which is a nice little marketing ploy they have to get you in there at $1.91, but that's for a membership. As a matter of fact, I saw the figures this evening, the national average for gasoline is $2.03 a gallon. In New Hampshire, the average is $2.06, and it has hit rock bottom. So not only should we not use the number $1.91, that's a marketing ploy by Cumberland Farms, we should actually assume that it's going up. And every year for the last two years, we've actually underbudgeted, and it's cost the police department more. So that's what I mean by, I hate, you know, it's just a poor line item to look at waste.
I guess my point, Wayne, is I was asking for the Budget Committee to give me the amount of gallons that the PD used. Didn't seem like any one of you had the number.
Well, that's, and that, well, that's it. This is, this is trying to impress everybody that has the water district, you looked at that, and you came up with that. This honestly is a line item where it looked like $32,000. This was actually, I believe, the week before Christmas was that meeting with, with the heads of departments. I just, my point is, I just don't see how this is the line item. It might be impressive that you with the water district went through these numbers, and maybe you got a nice number on your budget that makes it look impressive, but this is a poor line item to look at waste.
I'm just asking the point. The Budget Committee, I would have hoped, would have asked, how many more gallons, or did they use less gallons this last year than the year before? Was that question asked to the PD?
Well, we used $3,000 more for the last two years.
That doesn't tell you what you used this far as, how many gallons.
Well, we're sorry, that may, I personally didn't break it down, I don't know if others went with the per gallon, and you're--
We have to give you that information.
As impressive as it might be for the water district, but this is one where we've actually underbudgeted it two years in a row, and we've kept it at that number, and the police department has found areas in their budget to make up for that underbudgeting.
And I understand--
This is not an over-budget situation.
And I understand, where you're coming with the numbers, there are several ways that the Budget Committee will work. There are some times that we can do it just by the numbers that are being presented and put nothing, no credence in people that are coming before us, like the police chief or the director of public works, as they knowing how much money they actually need to put that kind of fuel in it. Now, if the public wants the numbers broken down, we will certainly provide them at, I would really recommend that you ask us that, at the town meeting, because we certainly will provide them for you, if that's what, that's what's needed, in order to really take a look at the bottom line to this budget.
Wait, are you ready to move on to a different one then?
I'm just answering questions from the public, and you seem to be the public.
You're the public.
That's right, you are the public, and you certainly have had more, a lot to say.
May I move on?
You, well, that's up to you.
Under administration, Town Hall Maintenance and Repairs, there's a notation here for D. The one that had been budgeted, yeah, $45,000, perhaps here, and it's jumped up to $33,000 this year. There is a list of items that are supposed to be managed under the Town Hall Maintenance and Repairs. And under it is Auburn, the Prim trees, downtown, Main Street, and Island. How does that get put into the Town Hall and not into the Parks Department's budget?
Main Street isn't on the park, so it's not a jurisdiction of the Park Commissioners. The Island is owned jointly by the Town of Tilden and the Town of Northfield. It is also not a jurisdiction of the Park Commissioners, because what we do on the Island, we share with Northfield. The Selectmen have not given that to the Park Commissioners to manage.
Why is it not then under the Highway Department? Because it is an outdoor, rather than, I think of Town Hall, I think that we're indoors, so that is not under D.
It's a great conversation. Go ahead and keep going.
It is because the Selectmen, there's a process we go through, so we wanna make certain that we go through it to contact the Northfield Selectmen and agree on what to be done, agree on how the work will be done, who the work will be done by, and the cost of the work. We have had a couple of years ago, excuse me, an issue where we needed to replace the bridge. And it was at the beginning of this agreement we now have with them, and we failed to follow the procedure, the Selectmen did, and we ended up paying for repairs to the ramp on our own, because we didn't follow the right procedures. So that's why it's still under the Selectmen's privilege. We wanna make certain that that contact is made at the appropriate time, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
And that information was shared with the Budget Committee.
The front doors are going to be sanded and restained again. What is going to happen this time different than the last hundred times that this door has been sanded and restained in order to make this stop being a--
This weird, so very beautiful mahogany front doors that were custom-made and everything from town is supposed to bind a off-the-shelf deck door. One of the things with that--
Need water?
--is maintenance, and it has to be done properly. Like you said, it is just like the hull of a boat. If you know anywhere that has or ever had a wooden boat, they would have to be done in a certain way. To get it done this time, and I'm watching this very closely, that the procedures are followed right, just like it is a boat or anything like that, we're going to make sure that the bids are going to clearly state exactly what they're going to do, and they're going to be done properly to do that. The doors, because they're exposed to the sun and the weather and the wear, will have to get done about every six years, even if we do the premium job. However, if we go and do a really good, proper job, and every, let's say, four years, we can just do a touch-up finish on it, which will cost much less.
What is that gonna cost, John?
Probably, I think we're talking, I think we should be able to get done for around $3,000, $4,000 to have them completely stripped of the previous finishes that were put on there that may not have been proper--
And three coats.
--and have it done, and have the proper way done, as if it's the hull of a mahogany boat. Take it off the hinges, the bottom of it done, and everything, have it done right, and then maintained as, you know, on a regular basis, so it won't have to get stripped and redone with the, maybe a not-so-good of a--
Does that both sets of doors?
Yes.
Both sets of doors.
Do we ever think about putting them in a closure, Roni?
I think we did talk about building--
Yeah, we have some estimates on awnings, similar to the awnings that are in the front that could extend out. It's really the sewer entrance doors that get the most exposure.
Are the sewer entrance doors even used?
Yes.
Tony?
On that same line item, in these, in these notes, you have three items. Install heat upstairs stage area, purchase energy-saving window film, purchase at least one in fireproof file cabinet for assessing and personal records in Selectmen's office. Each of these items has a notation that it's a 2014. What does that mean? And if it is a 2014 expense, why are we paying for it with the 2015 budget? Why were they not taken out of the 2014?
Certainly, they were taken out of the 2014 budget. That's just letting you know that those were projects that we had in 2014 that haven't been completed yet. We did purchase the fireproof file cabinets, we did purchase the window film, it hasn't been installed yet, and we did have the heat fixed up here that was completed in 2014.
Were these funds encumbered from 2014?
The only one that was encumbered was the, no, I think we all, we paid them all in 2014. I'll double-check.
Why are they listed here?
Just to let the townspeople know that in 2014, those were the projects we completed.
The way that this looks, and this is, you know, an $8,000 increase in this line item, it makes it look like these three items that are 2014 expenses are coming out of the 2015 budget, and that's one of the reasons for this $8,000 increase in that line item. And it needs to be made clearer--
Okay. Okay.
These have already been paid out of 2014.
Yes.
Because it's not clear here, it just looks like you bought them, and if you didn't, you don't show that you encumbered the money from 2014, then it is unclear in the budget.
Okay.
John, you look like you need to say something.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, because if it's presented, um, it wouldn't be clear. I, I was aware of the 2014, and we do put the 2014 on there, but it is confusing as to whether it was just encumbered.
It's part of the increase.
Yeah, it looks like it was encumbered during 2014, but paid, to be paid out in 2015.
Do you have any idea how much of that increase is going to be a one-time thing, and will you be able to, for 2016, bring that line item back down?
Yeah, this, the carpeting is the largest expense, because not only is it purchasing the carpeting and paying to have it installed, because they have to work around keeping the, certain offices open, but also paying to have the, um, the office equipment moved. Our safes and our fireproof file cabinets. That's why it's so expensive. The last time we received an estimate for, in early 2014, it was going to be $20,000 just for the carpeting, the materials and the labor, and the tile, some tile. And that didn't include the labor of moving things. So we put that back, so we, we put that on hold for 2014. I think we've had this project in the budget for at least five years since I've been here, and now it's at the point where we really have to get it done this year.
Oh, Scott.
Wayne, on the Lakes Region Mutual Fire Aid, has there been any discussion with the Selectmen? I mean, we must have a representative on that board up there now, don't we? The town?
I don't, Catherine, do we?
Yes, there.
And who is that representative? A concern I have as a taxpayer, paying that bill now, it used to be in our county taxes, now it's in our local. Their dispatch up there, which, they're on group-two insurance for the fire. That means we pay 29.7% in on their retirement. We don't pay that in our dispatch here in the PD in town. Carrie Wiggins, the dispatcher here, she does not get, she's not in group-two. And my point is, I would hope that our representative would adamantly go after them and say, why is somebody who's dispatching from Lakes Region Fire up there, why are they on group-two? Why would we have to pay so they can retire in 20 years? When they're never going to fight a fire, they're just going to sit there and dispatch, no different than they do here. And if the dispatch in the Tilton PD, and the same with Bellnap County Sheriff's, is in group-one, not group-two, so you pay a lot less, I would hope that this number gets, gets addressed as far as why through the Selectmen. I'd hope, I'm bringing it to the Budget Committee because it's one of the few times you see it in front of you here.
And I agree with you, but I would rather you address Catherine directly.
I think she heard me.
But I think more of saying, since Catherine is the representative of that, I think that that concern being directed to Catherine will be up to her at this point in time to pass that information on. And we do take, we're very cognizant of the, of the cost, and we have been, ever since it went its separate ways from what it used to be. Tony.
Moving down, um, the, the items that I brought up when I first stood up, the salary lines of the Town Clerk Tax Collector. I want to know why there is such a large wage increase for the deputy and for the Town Clerk Tax Collector. 30%, nobody gets, and I've heard, oh, well, look at the wages. What wages were used? What towns were compared to? Who, who oversaw this wage increase of 30%? Because this is something that is so huge, I don't know anybody who's ever gotten, without a job description change in any way, has gotten a 30% increase of their wage. That's just ridiculous.
Any one on the Board or the Committee wish to address that?
I will.
Okay.
Well, first, looking at merit raises of 41, with merit raises added to it, it's 41.5 approximately for last year. We're now looking at 46.5 for this year at, let's call it a $5,000 increase. So I, I don't know where your 30% came from, but I was appalled when I saw it also. We brought that up into the meeting, and we discussed it at one point, and I actually did the research, that the state of New Hampshire actually comes out with a report that was updated this year. And it's, when you go to each line item, administrative, Town Clerk Tax Collector, Police Department, it gives you examples from other towns. And we went, I went to our town, our designation. Our designation, I think, was 3,000 to 3,500 people. And the other towns that were in it, I remember Wolfboro was in it, and I just don't remember the other towns. And I was amazed. I was amazed that our salaries are as high as they are. When I first saw the Selectmen's Assistant, as a matter of fact, I brought it up in this meeting, that you would have to not only be an executive assistant to get that in the private sector, it would have to be higher, it's higher than a Wall Street. So I was adamant that salaries were crazy in this town. Well, if you look at that town, that statewide, um, report of towns, and you look at our area, and you look at it, I brought it up in the meeting, I did the math on that one, to run municipalities in the state of New Hampshire is ridiculously expensive on all sectors. I looked at that one, we were at a point of, I forget exactly what the number is, I look at the notes, but I think it was 16 to 19% low. I'm not talking about to the average on that position. Now, if you look at our town, and you look at it compared to the other towns that are designated with us, we have a much higher commercial base than any of those towns do. So I was as skeptical, if not more skeptical than you were. And when I looked at that one, and I looked at it, there was no doubt, we were well underpaying that position. As a matter of fact, after I looked at that, there were a couple other ones that I looked at, and we're in the ballpark. We're in the ballpark on mo, like, we'll be a little high on some, we'll be a little low on others. But New Hampshire is the politics state, and running municipalities, when it comes to salaries in the state of New Hampshire, is incredibly expensive. The joke was, and it's not a joke, I'm going back to school for political science to get in with one of these towns, because compared to the private sector, compared to the private sector, New Hampshire pays well on all municipalities, and to stay where we were. When I first saw that administrative assistant, Selectmen's Assistant position, I said to him, make sure you let me know when that opens up, because I'll go from manager of a computer company with a state contract into that position, and not only take, not, take a very big pay cut, it would be almost the same. Now, obviously, they've made amendments to that, and we made it a point, but the point on this job was my research on that report, was we were grossly underpaying that, and in the state of New Hampshire, municipality salaries are high, very high.
You did not need to increase this line, all-in-one shot 30%.
Where did you get 30%?
Well, it went up 16% just between what was budgeted and what was expended in 2014. That was $5,000 for six months. That's almost a $1,000 a month raise for that one individual. Wish to hell I could get that, really do.
Don't we all?
So for a year-over-year, it's $1,000 a month raise for that one position. And you didn't have to, the, the Select Board does not have to increase a line item for the town in that big of a swath all at once. They don't have to do that. And to do it like this, to hurt the taxpayer, is just unbelievable. It's just, it, it doesn't look good, and it isn't good.
It is unfortunate that the report that we worked off of, and I, I wasn't on the Selectmen, but the-
Wolfboro, Wolfboro's an expensive town.
Right.
You got a lot of wealthy people up there paying a, a small tax bill.
With a low commercial base, but, but the point also is, and the, the thing is, that the, the report that was used was, I think, run every four years, and unfortunately, I, and I don't know, I'm speculating at this point, because it was a Selectmen's, and the discussion we had, put to the point that I, I got out of it, that we should have been raising it, because it was so grossly underpaid at that point, that it should have been raised so it politically looked better. But at that point, once they saw it, once they noticed it, you know, it's not, it's-
John, that report came from the local government center, correct? Was it the local municipal?
I don't remember the name of the report.
Municipal, local government, so it wasn't rated. Jules?
I just wanted to make the point that that was not a unanimous vote for that, and does somebody want to explain how it works at town meeting, better than I can, about how we can, we're supposed to vote for that salary as a legislative body? And we just put that, I believe, I don't want to speak for the whole Board, but we put that number in there in case the legislative body votes for that raise. Doesn't have to be that way, but this is a-
The, the one I was discussing was the deputy one, because the question, I think, had both of them added to it. I was discussing, when I was talking about the numbers I was talking about, was the deputy position, not the tax collector.
Scott.
The way this should hurt is, it's just the opposite way around. The Budget Committee should bring numbers that they recommend to the legislative body, the voting body. We depend on you to do the research, to look these numbers through, to come up with a number, and you're recommending to the townspeople that this is the number. So when this number's put in there, it's not put in there saying, you know, I hope the town votes for it, put in there that that's the number you're recommending to the town. The concern I have with the, the higher number, the Town Clerk, is that's an elected position. That person runs, he runs for that position for three years, knowing what that's paying. And all of a sudden, now, this year, we go from 51,390 to 60,000. That's $8,700. No matter how you cut it, that, that jumps up, he's got to hear 16.75%. Now, that bothers me more than anything, because did not, or did not that person know what that position paid when they ran for it? And does, who put this number? Is, 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 it says Department request. If I'm not mistaken, isn't that the person that runs that department, the Department requests? So that person puts his own number in there? Is that correct, or is that wrong? Am I mistaken?
That, that is wrong. Joyce?
No, that's what the department had requested.
So that was the department that put their own number in there?
Yeah, and it's the town meeting that votes on that.
So the Department request, and the Selectmen's request, and the Budget Committee is all the same? The number's 60, 60, 60.
John, that's not true, is that? John, didn't you make an amendment to that?
I did make a motion for the Budget Committee to put in a recommended amount for that, what they felt recommended, and then, this will be hashed out on the floor, I think we all know that.
Oh, definitely.
And there was data collected, there was data that was presented across, John?
If I could finish, I asked the Town Clerk Tax Collector, just because I knew that this was going to be a subject-
Scott, I got your-
That the Budget Committee would have to go and defend the amount that they chose on it. And, um, I haven't received any information of where that came from. I don't know if anybody else has, but that's what it is. I hear you.
Scott.
My follow-up to that.
Yep, go ahead.
When I hear about reports and stuff, we've heard this for years from the school district with the teachers, that Guilford pays this. Well, you know what? If Guilford pays that, go teach at Guilford. Just because somebody else is paying it, do we have to, do we increase, just jump it up? If we went from, you know, the deputy clerk went from 35, 942, it went up $10,609 to 46,551 in one year. And my point is, it's just, if some other, if we're always comparing ourselves, that's what the teachers have done with you. They compare, and you talked about fighting at the school. That's the same thing we fought at the school for years. They'll use what the teachers, well, they can make more money, go there. But when you have an elected position, and they run for that position, knowing that being paid $50,136 for the year when they run, and to expect to get $60,000 in, in two years later, is just mind-boggling. How that, how you can comprehend that, I don't know. And now, I feel, when we were sold back in 2000, and I think it was seven or eight, that the townspeople, it was brought through, and Catherine, you can back me up on this, it was brought to the townspeople that by going to a full-time Town Clerk Tax Collector and a full-time deputy Town Clerk, Deputy Tax Collector, that we were going to be getting rid, because we never had a full-time tax collector, never. We always had a deputy, a, a tax collector that was part-time, it was su facto for years, and then we had a deputy clerk, a deputy tax collector, and she served as the deputy Town Clerk underneath the Town Clerk. We were told as townspeople at town meeting when that went through, that this was going to save us money. This has done nothing but cost us more money, I'm sorry, by making these two positions full-time. And now we've got online, you can register your dog online, you can pay your, your, your town taxes online, and-
Tony, it's staying.
So as far as I'm concerned, they have less responsibilities now than they had 15 years ago.
Tony.
I agree with him, but I wanted to get back to your, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Juliette.
Really?
No.
In the case of this, where there is disagreement within the Board, within, within an line item, in the past, we have, upon occasion, zeroed out, in one year, we zeroed out entire raises, no raises at all, nobody was getting a raise, and we just zeroed out the merit line. It just wasn't happening. With a line item like this, if you do not believe in these numbers, if you believe that they should be changed, that, that the public needs to have more input on this, then you level fund it, and you let the town meeting come forward with a warrant article, have the Selectmen conclude, they'll have it all written up, we want to amend this line item by this dollar mark, just as, as Eric had read on that other line. And they, let them get up there and fight for it in front of the constituency, not just the Budget Committee. You do not have to just rubber stamp everything they put in front of you, ever.
And I, I disagree with that last statement tremendously. We spent all this time this year not to rubber stamp the Select Board's budget. We worked diligently and very hard for this, and there is the past and there is the future. I'm hoping the town will get to, go to the future someday. Stan.
We also have to realize that, you know, when the deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector percentage came to us, we were appalled by it also. But it was also pointed out to us that that was a Select Board decision, it was a personnel decision. And I appreciate your guys' arguments, you're very good at it, but my question is, was there, was there any mention at a Select Board meeting of this percentage? Because once it comes to us that the person was given this raise, and we had to look at it and say, you know, where did that come from? We were appalled also. And I'm not saying that it was a correct or incorrect decision, but I just looked at it like, where did you even come with those numbers? That's crazy, just like you're doing. And I'm not saying that my research said, yes, we agree with it or not. It's, it's in the ballpark. It's not insane. When it came to the salary of the town clerk, tax collector, that's up to the citizens. So, I appreciate your coming to the board, to, to this committee and, and keeping us abreast of your concerns and your passion on it. We have that same passion when it comes to these things, but the town clerk, tax collector salary is not our decision and that's how we discussed it when we were coming up with that number is, well, do we put it here, do we put it? It's all by what the town decides anyways.
Yeah, I, I take it that, I really, the facial expressions are really bad. I, just hold on for a second. Hold on for a second. You have a right to your opinion, you have a right not to mock the board.
I'm not mocking-
And I'm getting that from Tony right now with the facial expressions, that does not, the public is here, we're here to hear your information, we make the decisions, we hear your two voices. We've heard lots of other voices and will take all those voices and put them together. We have given you very, very lenient time to express all your views, much more than you would probably get in any other public meeting. I take exception to any mockery-
I'm not mocking-
...that that comes to this board or any attempt to confront and to be held in contempt members, individual members of this board. If there is a question, if there's a sharing of information, that information is in the will, and it should be presented in the strongest democratic debating process, and that's where we stand. We are getting close to nine o'clock and I will adjourn, adjourn at nine, so we'll go with, this has been over, a lot of time normally that we normally get, just because we knew that there were certain questions and certain rego- information was getting out. This is not to be, I would really have our time if this is brought down to a personal level. This should be and continues to be what's in the best interest of the citizens. Scott?
My, my, my question and concern is, as a citizen, this is the only chance I get at the public hearing and also the business meeting that we have in March to express my concern, okay? These numbers, you said, well, why didn't you go to the selectmen? I had no idea that this had even taken place, okay? I'm looking at it, I picked up the budget this morning downtown, downstairs. So, when I look at this, it's the first time I see it in front of me.
Yeah.
Okay? And this is why it is a public hearing. It is for the public to come in. You, we are under thirty-two budget law, it's your budget, Stan.
Right.
It's the Budget Committee's budget that the people vote on, not the state's budget, not the department head's budget, it's the Budget Committee. And we elect you to represent us. And this is the one place that the Budget Committee has the total say in the budget. So, when you say that number was put in there and you can't do anything about it, the Budget Committee can put any number they want in any line. You could zero out every line and the selectmen would have to go to town meeting and defend, or you have to bring up, you would run the Budget Committee at town meeting. But I said here, and that's why I said, I hope that the Budget Committee would look at these numbers and bring the best number they could to the townspeople and explain why we're at that number. And I have concerns when I see such a big chunk in one year.
And, and I appreciate-
And I appreciate your concerns. I had, and that was the point I made to Tony, is I and many others on this committee had the same exact concern, like, whoa! Where did that come from, you know?
And we all have the concerns. My concern is the tone of the meeting. The tone of the meeting needs to be one of information sharing, the, providing your opinion or anyone's opinion to that, and that is not the tenor I was getting from this discussion. So, I will go to John first and then I will go to Tony.
Uh, I was just going to say something on, on that rate. It's public hearing, we're, we want to hear from the public and I think all of us, both sides, let's not debate the numbers, let's get some information out where you feel, you know, that there's areas that we should revisit and look at, and that's what I'd like to do. And we can state where we got our information and, and just go from there and not move on to the next thing, so I can get notes on all this stuff. I don't want it to hit nine o'clock and you still have things that you didn't bring up or anybody else in the audience.
Tony?
IT land use, both of these line items, less than ten minutes. The IT department went up by twenty-six point four, the land use was up by twenty-eight point nine. Can you explain these numbers, where they came from? Those big, big increases. Those are the most important things to address right now. We have definite-
I can explain, I can explain land use. They're, um, they're creating the position to be a full-time position.
All right.
They're taking a part-time position and the, the land use coordinator is currently, and effective April first, making it a full-time position.
April first, they're making a, a full-time land use officer?
Yes, land use coordinator, or whatever his official, land use assistant.
Will increase all the salary, salary lines, the salary line as well as the-
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Like the many insurance, because this will be a full-time position, the insurance will all work.
Yes.
Um, just to give you a little bit more than that, they are also taking on more duties. What we're trying to do is get away from some of the expensive parts of Avatar that's doing our assessing and that, and take, that person is going to be taking over a portion of that so that it will be done in-house, so trying to get more of the, that done in-house as opposed to these contracts. And we've, uh, we haven't signed a contract for Avatar as yet. We've delayed that contract based on this land use person being approved for full-time and then we'll reevaluate our Avatar contract.
Go ahead.
For, um, years now, we have had a, um, a fund for the appraisal. Will this reduce the warrant article to put money into that dedicated fund?
Uh, it will reduce the annual appropriation amount. The money that we put in the revow fund is when we do the update in five years. That goes to offset the cost of the actual update, sales update.
So, that should stay the same?
That will stay the same, but the amount that we pay annually, usually it's around, what, twenty-four thousand eight hundred, and that has been reduced to a little over eighteen thousand because we're going, uh, we're just adding an additional eight hours a week to that land use coordinator position, which that position used to be full-time, went part-time and now things are really getting active again. So, it's a very busy office and, um, I don't know if other people have heard, but I get complaints from people saying, why isn't there someone here full-time? And now's a good time to do that and we're seeing about a five thousand dollar a year savings by having that person assume some more of the assessing duties.
Tony, could you restate your second question about IT, please?
Uh, the increase of the IT department line is twenty-six point four percent. What goes into that increase?
Excuse me. Um, some of the things that, naturally, anything that we spend, that we have grants on, we have to budget for it going out, that includes some of that. There are some things that are coming up. One of the things is body cameras for the police department. You've got to remember, IT now includes the police department, IT-related things. So, includes like the body cameras. There was also, uh, the rewiring of the police station, but we got a grant on that. Was that in this, that's in two thousand fifteen?
Yes.
Just making sure I've given you the right stuff. The two thousand fifteen rewiring of the police station and, um, the town hall for all the proper cables, it's all old wiring for the computers. That, we also received a ten thousand dollar grant from Cable TV, then negotiated that out, and we just got the approval that we will be receiving that during two thousand fifteen. So, that's part of that. Um, and there's a lot of updates, servers and things like that, but it does include PD, town hall and highway department. Probably the other question, this is things that, two years ago, were included in the police department and highway department budgets, town hall.
Jim, I'd like to give you a last chance to have anything you'd like to say or add on or ask?
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm concerned about the salary line.
Okay, then while you were taking that, I'll be right with you, Scott. Okay, Scott?
Do I understand that we're going to attempt to try to lease cruisers again, looking at this detail? Are we going to try to, we tried that in two thousand eight, we leased three cruisers and what happened is the three cruisers came up through the line and at the end of the three, they didn't buy any cruisers while the leases were going on, and at the end, we ended up with six B, six C and the chief's car, which was the three leases. And we ended up in a hole with the PD. I was serving on the Budget Committee, I remember it well, and it was a catastrophe as far as leasing cruisers. Because if I read this correctly, it looks like we're gonna, are we gonna lease two cruisers? Is that correct?
One this year.
One this year? And that's going to be for a three-year lease, I'm reading here?
For a three-year lease.
So, we're gonna have a fifteen thousand five hundred dollar payment on that car per year, where we can purchase a, a new cruiser for twenty-six? Is that correct, John?
Uh, no, I believe it's about thirty, what, the total price, fully equipped?
Oh, forty-four, I see that.
Yeah.
Um, but what happened when we, when the, the past history, the selectmen, Catherine must be well aware, she was a selectman at the time, uh, it just created a, a problem. The cruisers came up through, they didn't buy any, they came up through the three cruisers, the three leases, and when it got to the end, there were, the, the two of them, the front-line cars, six B and C, were of no value anymore other than being a detail cruiser and we were in a hole. All of a sudden, they were crying that they needed cruisers, they didn't have any front-line cruisers anymore. Um, and if you look at the fleet, you'll notice there's a bunch of sixes, there's no seven, there's no eight, there's no nine. The next cruiser was ten, was, and only bought one in ten. Because of that three-year lease, they got into two thousand eight, and it just killed the PD. And I hope we don't get that, I hope we learn from our history of what this town did with the cruisers. I think we should be buying a cruiser every year, if that's the case, and rotating the cruisers, um, instead of getting into a lease deal. I just think a lease is a bad deal for us. It's not, it's, it, it did not play out well the last time, and that's my comment on that.
Okay. Hey, excuse me for the nine o'clock with John, I'll let you-
Just a, a, a quick answer in that, we, we're planning on doing a lease, one per year at, then after three years, so, and retiring after three years vehicles, so that the cars will, you know, they'll be paid off in three years. So, they'll each, um, after three years, the fourth year, the first one would have been paid off and we're going to lease another one.
Now, well, go ahead.
I, I just understood, I'm just looking for a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So, you're saying you're gonna lease one in two thousand fifteen?
Yes.
One cruiser. And then what, and then what's gonna happen after that, John?
Two thousand sixteen, gonna lease one, and it'd be one per year.
So, that would mean that this year, you would have a fifteen thousand dollars for the lease and then next year you'll have two, so you'll have a thirty thousand dollars worth of leases, and then the third year you'll have forty-five thousand dollars worth of a lease, and then the following year you'll just continue with that forty-five thousand dollars as each year, every, every third year as one gets retired. So, how do we gain here?
These.
Except that we have two years that we're not paying forty-five thousand dollars.
The, the difference is, is after, at the fourth year, we can buy out that car for, yeah, I, I think it's like a dollar that it's kind of-
Scott?
Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, just clarification, so I understand this and I, and I'll make a quick point, I'll be done, I promise you. We're gonna spend fifteen thousand five hundred dollars on the lease, correct?
Okay.
Is it fifteen five, John?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
And then we're gonna spend eighteen thousand to outfit the car, no matter whether we buy it or lease it, we gotta outfit it. So, it's costing us eleven thousand dollars less, or ten thousand five hundred dollars less to, uh, the first year to lease it than to buy it. But the second year, we're gonna be behind the eight ball because we're gonna pay fifteen five for the lease on that for the second year and for the third year. So, for twenty-six thousand, we'd had that car for the three years, twenty-six thousand plus the eighteen to equip it would have taken us through the three years. Instead, we're gonna pay fifteen, 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 so we're gonna spend forty-six thousand five hundred dollars for those three years, plus the eighteen thousand to equip it, and we're gonna have to spend a buck to buy it. And if I'm not mistaken, our thirteens right now, we have two on the front line, I think they're approaching a hundred thousand miles, both of them, and we haven't had them three years. So, we retire the cars after three, after a hundred thousand, they don't, they don't seem to use them after a hundred thousand. You look at any of the cars and once they go past a hundred thousand, they come off the front line, they're no longer the front-line vehicles. So, I don't understand the math of it. It does not make sense to me.
Okay.
Okay? That's my point.
Absolutely.
And I think it's the same problem we've had in the past history.
It is, it's a little past nine, which we-
Thank you.
We agree, not a problem. I will also offer the public that if you have further questions, feel free to contact us. Okay, I know, and that's fine, and I'll even give you my email address, because I do actually answer that.
Another talking person.
I know, and we, I'm out shoveling, Scott will find me. Um, if you have further questions, please feel free to email me at brockw at franklinpiris.edu and I'll make sure that the questions come before the board and that the answer is both in public forum on the, the camera and also that you get a written reply. I want to thank everyone for coming out, I want to thank everyone for great debate, I love, it was a great debate and enjoyed this session.
And I personally thank the Budget Committee for serving, I know it's not easy. We've been on, Tony and I both have been on your side for years.
I know.
So, and I want, I'm one of the few people that in the last, since two, uh, since nineteen ninety-six, I've been coming to every budget meeting.
Absolutely, I, I, I wish you'd come to all our meetings, it's, it's more fun. I also want to thank Joyce for coming tonight and Joanna, who's been sitting there trying to figure out whether we're gonna kill each other or not. Um, and I never take anything personal. Thank you for coming. Please, if you have any kind of questions, email us and enjoy the evening, because it's supposed to get below two.
I got one question.
Yes.
If you're asking people to email them, would you ask them whether or not they want it to be public or not? Are you assuming everything is public?
Yes, I'll do that.
Or only if it's asked?
Yes, only if it's asked.
It's not going public unless it's-
Thank you very much for coming, go enjoy the evening.
Stan, I have no problem whether I ask it here or-
Well, that's why, he, the way he said it was, oh, if you ask me a question, we're gonna bring it up.
Hold on, just a second.
It should be clarified with the person.
It's, it's like, it's like the legislative body and there's six thousand, three thousand, four hundred.
I gotta check the numbers, I-
Take it off.
Yeah.
Okay. Committee, are we meeting next week?
We have a hearing, because we, we, I think we have to meet anyway, public hearing because of the, any warrant articles, right?
And the warrant articles go on, it'll be ready.
It's at two weeks.
Yeah, if you want a preview, meet next week before you have your public hearing.
Can, well, should probably look and see if we want to change any of the numbers.
Okay, we can do that, or we can do that next week, we're coming anyways.
And discuss any information that we might need to gather to-
Okay. So, let's meet next week.
Yeah.
Okay, we will meet next week, seven o'clock, usual time, usual cast of characters, plus two?
Plus, Lewis Jean, yeah.
Things better. The chair will, if there's no other business before this body, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
A second.
Non-debatable motion, all is in favor.
All right.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, Joyce, would you do the honors, please?